Two-minute warning.
Still cracks me up. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees. I'm Stephanie George, the Chair of the Trustees, and we have a full house tonight with all of our trustees present. Gina Steiner, Eric Sizney, Eric Fong, and Marwan Cameron are all present. Gina, would you like to kick us off, please?
Sure, I'll read the mission statement, inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more. Thank you.
And Jason, can you introduce the team here tonight?
Absolutely. Welcome, everyone, and I have my wonderful leadership team in. Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson, Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Director, Chief Financial Officer and Operating Officer, Dan Bayer, and then we've got Executive Director of the Foundation, Wendy Kyle, and then we've got our wonderful Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeanne Allen, and equally wonderful Director of Human Resources and Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Lucretia Robertson, and last but certainly not least, on the controls for the meeting, the very capable Director of Technology and Facilities, Mike Rose. Thank you.
There's a lot of pressure there when you have to keep up with
I know.
With the titles and the
They're all wonderful.
Superlatives of the team, so thank you very much. Any additions or changes to the agenda from the trustees? Okay, great. Next on the agenda is public comment. We don't have any public comment this evening, so in fact, we might just be speeding right through the agenda because it's a pretty light agenda. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Are there any items that trustees would like to be pulled out of the consent agenda for discussion? Great, okay, seeing none. Included in the consent agenda are minutes of the February 28 regular board meeting, payment of the February 2023 bills, payroll and benefits, and the blanket voucher bills, as well as the surplus library materials to be withdrawn from the collection for February, which includes 4,758 items. Those being the items in the consent agenda, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Great. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we got to you quickly, Jeanne. Next on the agenda are presentations. We're going to start this evening with a presentation of the new Kitsap Regional Library website preview led by Jeanne Allen.
Well, that was quick. All right, tonight, we're excited to give you a sneak peek of our new website and catalog. The project is years in the making, and we'll be launching it next Tuesday as a preview for the public, so it's going to be available for our patrons to explore and provide comments on. We're not completely done building this, but we are nearly there. The new site and catalog move us closer to our strategic goals, creating a user experience that's more intuitive and accessible, and there are a ton of new features for the new website and the new catalog that really do make this area of the library more open to all. So we created a short video for presentation sake for you, and then we'll wrap it up.
We're just a few weeks away from the public launch of our new BiblioCommons website and catalog. For nearly five years, we've been dreaming about the possibility of elevating our online user experience. In 2020, this became one of the focuses of our strategic plan. We knew we wanted a more user-friendly experience with a central focus on increasing accessibility. Because we know our patrons spend most of their time online and in the catalog, we wanted an experience that could work seamlessly across both the catalog and the website. And we wanted a sense of curiosity so our patrons could enjoy the same sense of discovery that can be found in our physical spaces. BiblioCore works as our new patron catalog, creating more personalized, accessible, and connected user experience. BiblioWeb replaces our current website and partners more closely with the patrons' catalog to create a seamless transition and greater opportunity for discovery. BiblioEvents replaces our current event space, providing easier browsing and more visibility to our programs. And even though the new website is highly responsive, BiblioApp will make it even easier to explore the library from your phone.
So let's start with the most important place, the patron catalog.
Welcome to our new patron catalog. The first thing you'll notice is just how easy it is to navigate this new catalog. Along the side, you'll see facets that allow you to navigate your searches and really refine down to exactly what you're looking for. Some of the new favorites are available now, which allows you to see exactly what you can walk into any branch and pick up, and as you come a little bit lower, you can also see what's new at the library. One of the best parts about the new catalog is the complexity of its search feature. So if I search for something like children's Spanish books, what you'll notice is the searching is a lot more intuitive. It functions a lot more like a search would that you encounter in other areas of the web like Google or Amazon, where this search knows that you are looking for books that are specifically for children's in the Spanish language, and that is what you'll see first. Searching for a popular title, what you'll see is it starts to auto-populate, so the title that you're looking for will start to pop up, and then when you see that title, it will typically be the first thing that you see, and all of the different formats are shown right here at the top. Clicking into that title, you can still see all of the formats that are available, the description of the book, and in the new catalog, there's a community that's created where Biblio Commons enables its users to share reviews, rate the books, and even create lists. There's a lot more I can go into within the catalog, but I really am excited for you all to explore this, so we'll move on to the website.
As we introduce the website, I'd first like to talk about all the work that went in to preparing for the design.
Our team spent a lot of time on Google Analytics reviewing the past two years and pre-pandemic usage patterns. We also used a tool called Crazy Egg, which shows us how our patrons spent their time on the homepage. We then looked at search usage for our page to understand any patterns that might illustrate areas that were missing from our current site. We brought together a team of staff to have a discussion about web design. We looked at different designs for different websites across the web, we looked at other libraries, and we looked at our own, and we wanted to set the priorities for the design of the new site. So let's see where all of that work led. Welcome to the new KRL.org. The first thing that you'll notice is better visibility for services, databases, and collections. As I scroll through the page, you can see that there's plenty of access to our collections, both new titles and lists that have been created by staff. Further along, you'll see a new feature, which is news and updates, where we plan on bringing in some of the content that we often share through email, but also featuring new products, new services, and simply what's happening in our branches. From our top navigation, you can see it's been greatly simplified. We've got just three tabs. The first, different ways to access the collection, both physical and digital, and then entry points into our services, where we first talk about what's available in the library, and then personalized services that are available, and then our library initiatives. From the top, you're going to find hours and locations, always the most important thing for our patrons besides the catalog. We do have three entry points for that, so that we hope that people can easily find their way there when they need to, and you'll also find this Help tab, which gives you access to our FAQs, and also a pathway into talking directly to a person. One final thing I want to share is just how visual this new website is. So I'm going to show you our books page. This page was created in collaboration with our collection and technical services team, and what you'll see here is a lot of different pathways into the books piece of our collection. So we've worked to create different ways to browse the collection. These are all topics that are most popular with our patrons. We have our lists here, different carousels that feature different areas of the newest arrivals, and then, of course, all the different resources related to reading. We even have book conversations here at the bottom. So this just gives you one peek into how visual we get to create new content on the website. So now I turn it over to you. I hope you enjoy and happy exploring. Thank you.
All right, so well, that's the preview of the site. As I mentioned, we're nearly finished building, so we've got about one more month before the website goes completely live. This coming Tuesday, there'll be an announcement on the site inviting people to explore the website if they'd like. One new thing that patrons will experience on the site on Tuesday is that we will actually be turning off the current events calendar and turning on the new events calendar, so you'll get a preview of that as well, and patrons will actually start actively using that. So we're in the process of populating that right now with all of the events for April on. The other aspect that we're going to be working really hard on in the next month is really reviewing the website for responsiveness and accessibility. There's a little bit more that we need to do on the back end to make sure that it's more accessible to screen readers and easier for people to use when they're using different tools to navigate the website that aren't the more typical desktop, mobile tablet tools. So, any questions? Yeah?
I guess one of my questions is, how easy is the new webpage going to be to maintain or update? Are we going to be 100% reliant on consultants, or will staff have some capability of doing that?
It's able to be completely maintained by my team.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so there's a lot of tools that come with the BiblioCommons tool that we're using to build this website that allow us to keep the content more fresh across the website so we can apply things in one space, and it will make those changes across the website, and we have the ability to apply tools in different ways so that it will bring in the new content into different areas in different ways, so that it's a little bit more discoverable by patrons. They'll have lots of opportunities to just kind of serendipitously encounter different areas of library service or the collections just by being on the site, and that's just going to be more intuitive.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Jeanne, can you talk about, because I think that's one of the things that we don't think about, right? We talk about the library a lot, and we think in very traditional ways that we walk into branches and stuff. Can you tell us a little bit more about what you learned about the volume of how much our community uses the online, and really what you learned, that heat map was super interesting?
Oh, yeah.
So did you learn things you didn't already know, or was it really a matter of that you affirmed some things you already know, but I'm just curious about that?
Yeah, I think it reinforced what we've, you know, I've been maintaining our library website since about 2015, so I think it reaffirmed some of our assumptions. We hear a lot from patrons when they reach out through the website. We hear from our staff, feedback from the patrons. So we've refined and refined over the last several years, but the heat map exercise and just talking to some people before we developed the site really helped us reinforce some of the ideas and recheck some of our assumptions. Really, when you talk about the patron use of the site, primarily, they're coming to our site to use the catalog, which is why the catalog aspect of this was so important, because making sure that patrons can really find what they're looking for in the catalog is really important. One of the future updates for the catalog that we hope is coming out soon is that Biblio Commons will find ways to take what we're building on the website side and integrate that into the catalog, so if you're searching for maybe family history, you'll also see something about the services that we have appear right in the catalog, and that's several months away, but it should be happening this year. So we're really excited about that because it makes the catalog more of a one-stop place for patrons to learn about not just what's in the collection, but also library services. The other things that are really important that people visit the website for is they stop in to see if the library's open, find directions to a library, so the location pages on this new site are really important, and we've built them to have a lot more details about the libraries that they're representing. So we wanted to make sure that any area where we communicate a library service within our branch is somehow represented on the site, and it's a lot more discoverable now.
I think this looks great. Congratulations to you and your team. I mean, a robust, a more robust search alone would have been a huge win, and I thought, I always thought the branding, for as long as I've been here, looked really modern and really clean, and I thought the website as it is now looked really clean, but this is a whole new level of modernness and cleanliness, and so I think this looks great. I think it brings a lot of value to the library, making this look modern, and congratulations to you and your team. Great job.
Thank you.
I'm curious, too. I saw your picture, Shannon, so I know there was, you know, that's a, we're talking about it because it's, you know, led by a website, but I'm also curious, just in terms of the impact to programs, but also, you know, IS and T being involved as well and the staff.
Yeah, I would say as far as the development of everything that you're seeing tonight and everything that's going to be launching in the next month, the amount of staff that have gone into developing this is significant. There's no team really untouched that hasn't participated in making sure that this website's going to be great for our patrons, so.
Good, good. Any other comments or questions for the team?
No, I just really wanted to chime in. It totally was a team effort, and Jeanne and her team have done a phenomenal job. She's put in a lot of long hours and sacrificed a lot to get us to this point, so we're really excited to, you know, unveil this to the public next week. The staff have been in preview now for a couple weeks, and so far, so good. I think to a resounding success, everybody's lovely, is happy with the product, and so kudos to Jeanne and her team and all the other teams. Public services was a big part of that, as well as IT, and even from, you know, just the website development early on, you know, we had a development team that was, that actually Professor Peterson taught. And I had to jump in unfortunately because Jeanne couldn't be there, and we were able to really get some good ideas from folks canvassing different sites to really put this one together. We got a chance to look at other BiblioCommons sites and really mock up what we thought would be our website, and a lot of that input came from that initial team, so really a group effort all around, and that's the way we like it in libraries, all pitching in together.
Could I just give a final shout out to the CTS team, too, who did a lot of
Yes, correct.
the development for the catalog? Yeah, so.
It's very, you know, it's very exciting, and congratulations, and it's, can't wait to get in there. What I love is, one of the favorite things about walking into a library is you look at these curated stations, if you will, by the staff picks and stuff, and so the fact that we're going to actually, I mean, if you delve, if you delve in before, you could get to book lists and stuff, but it's so fun to be able to see this look and feel a little bit more like the experience we often have when we walk into a space, so it's really exciting. Next on our agenda are board member reports. Eric Sizney, would you like to start from that end of the room?
Yeah. I, on the 16th, I attended a Strategic Planning Committee meeting, and I was glad to be able to get input on that. And then on the 17th, I attended Intellectual Freedom Training, and that was really interesting because I hadn't really thought about it, but book banning and so on, the political polarization that's happening, we haven't experienced too much of that here, but we have a little bit here and there. So anyway, that was really interesting. And then one of my goals when I became a board member was to visit the various libraries in the system and just to kind of know where, when people talks about Bainbridge or something, I'll just know what they're talking about, to have an image in my mind of that library. So anyway, Friday, a friend and I got in the car and went up to visit Bainbridge and Kingston and Little Boston and Paulsbull, and then Saturday, I stopped in at Port Orchard because I hadn't been in there for quite a while, and then today, I went down to downtown Pemberton. So anyway, I knew Silverdale and Sylvan Way in Manchester already, but libraries, the buildings are all quite different. Really, a contrast, Bainbridge was, really impressed me. That was busy and a very active volunteer group, and we talked to Carol Schuyler, and she was, I've met her before, but anyway, very impressive. The, like I say, the libraries are all different, but my friend and I both, we were just talking today, and the thing that, we came away from that was that, the one thing that ties these library all together that is the same is the staff. They're friendly, welcoming, and really try to be helpful, and very impressed. So I congratulate all the, all the staff in the system because that's, that's the one thing that really impressed us. So anyway, thank you.
So I love to learn, maybe a little bit more than that, I love to share. So I got to participate with Eric on those two events on the 16th and the 17th, and just some of those takeaways, I can't remember the gentleman's name that was facilitating the strategic planning, but he had this acronym PIES, which was a check-in tool, physical, intellectual, emotional, and spiritual check-in, and I thought that was really a great tool just to check in with folks before they got dug into the work. So I wrote that down, and it's something I'm going to implement with my team. On the second day, you know, we got into a little bit about the theory of advocacy and the theory of activism, and I'm just going to read the first bullet point of each. And so for the theory of advocacy, advocacy refers to the process of speaking or acting on behalf of someone or something to promote or protect their interests. And the theory of activism is activism refers to the use of direct action or collective organizing to bring about social change, and there's several other here in the definition. But looking at what you're trying to do through that lens, I think is really important, and so I'm really encouraged that the library is so progressive in the work that you're trying to do as you plan and go forward, and just being really proactive and just checking all the boxes there, and things that I hadn't really considered, and things that I do in my own organization. So it was just really exciting, it was a great learning opportunity, and like I said, I love to share the information now. Also, the Community Needs Assessment had, you know, it's, I guess, exposure to the county today, which was great, so I look forward to see, you know, how the Kitsap Regional Library System is going to implement that Community Needs Assessment going forward and just being a part of that advocacy and activism.
Well, I know we don't impose and collect overdue fees anymore, but we still get notices, and I'm happy to say I returned my books the minute I received a notice. Okay, but in all seriousness, no, I'm, as you guys know, I had a two-week bout of COVID, and then I had to travel for work, so I don't have any updates, but I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
We're delighted to actually see you, Gina, after what's been going on. Thank you. Eric?
So a week and a half ago, I attended the annual retreat for Bainbridge Public Library. Jason was there as well, shared a little bit about his vision, and we collaborated, got to hear from all the different committees from BPL about their three-year plan, their three-year vision amongst each committee for caring for the Bainbridge Public Library. Very passionate group, Eric, as you mentioned. Additionally, attended a Kitsap Regional Library Foundation meeting where we got to meet the consultant that was selected for the feasibility study for Port Orchard, so that was very exciting as well.
Thank you. On Friday, so a couple things. On Friday, I was able to be at the Kitsap Race and Equity Summit, and there was a huge team there from the library. It was so exciting to see a number of staff in place and to see the library table, and I was, I was surprised at how many people were picking up books and they had them at their, they had them at their tables, so that was really fun. And also, Marwan noted the Kitsap Community Needs Assessment. And Jeanne, I'm going to call you out a little bit because I think what's interesting about that, if you want, if you would share a little bit, like what you think is potentially like an item of interest related to that, the data that we're going to hopefully get from the Kitsap Needs Assessment, and how it complements other data, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
I think what you and I were talking about earlier is just that I'm really interested to look at the data that comes out of that compared to some of the other local data that we have and the census, because I think that data is really important for us as we look to the future in our strategic planning process and determine what the right priorities are in the pathway. So getting that data from as many resources as possible and looking at how it shows up in different ways because of the different methods that are used to collect that, I think is really important, and I'm really excited to be able to dig into that.
I think that's really, we, for a long time, we haven't had multiple sources, and we're about to come up on a time in the community, and certainly, I think, with the Kitsap Community Needs Assessment, the fact that there were over 4,000 respondents, I mean, the commentary today was it was probably one of the largest, most broadly representative surveys that we have been able to see and conduct in the county. I think there's a large credit for that, goes to the library, and Lucretia was on that team, and Jason's been tracking that, and Jeanne's been at the table, but in terms of even the ability to get that Community Needs Assessment opportunity out in the community to be able to collect that data is super important, so it's exciting, and I think we're all looking for ways, like how can we begin to apply it? And I think also the reminder that there will be other updates coming in the community, not to that survey specifically, but the K-Chip Survey is going to be updated this fall, which is really about healthcare priorities, and I understand that the United Ways Alice Report, which is also about basic needs, will start to become available, too, as we continue to will start to become available, too, as we continue to add to that data. So very exciting. Next, we have the finance committee report. Eric?
Thank you. Well, Dan's going to go over the numbers in a little bit more detail in the next agenda item. But we did discuss, and there are no financial concerns at this time. Everything is looking stable and strong. Additionally, we had a little discussion about the Port Orchard Community Center and the financial agreement that's still being discussed.
Dan, would you like to follow on that for the financial report, please?
Sure. As I spoke in the finance committee, it's a very boring report, so it's very good. I don't really have anything to add, but I'll be glad to entertain questions.
It was so non, you know, there was nothing to ask questions about in that report this time, which was exactly the way we like it, right? When it's just stable and steady as it goes through. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jason, the library director's report, please?
Yes. So as you've heard from board members, it's been busy. So we've had the board busy in trainings, leadership has been busy in trainings and retreats, and staff's been really busy. I can't believe the first quarter of the year is already done. So you heard last month about our organizational priorities, and, you know, we have been off to the races with those. So all of our leadership has been really busy with their particular projects. And then, you know, our staff have been really busy digging into community connections, including, you know, all of our usual partnerships, school visits, early learning programs. Branches have been hosting AARP tax assistance programs at Bainbridge, Paulsville, Kingston, and Port Orchard, and that's had high impact for staff, especially for people who have anxiety with doing taxes. And so that, lots of people, but just for those who don't have access and who are really afraid, that's a really high-impact program. And so I'm really proud of our ability to be able to provide space and Wi-Fi and the opportunity to have patrons come in. And then, you know, training has been, as we've mentioned, and also, you know, just doing regular programs around libraries, genealogy programs, and mobile services during their usual runs to populations who can't get out. It's been really impactful. It's business as usual. It's what we talked about. It's like, we're getting back integrated into the community. So that feels good, and very much through the first quarter, that's what we were about. And then in terms of the actual training mission, happy to say that we have a training specialist, and Lucretia and her team are really full right now. And so we're starting to really, you know, actualize that vision of having a robust staff and organizational training department. So we've had a number of trainings already for the staff at large, and then for this leadership team. We're not exempt for training. So, you know, it's been my goal all along to develop our leaders. We still have a lot of room to grow. And so having said that, we had, we embarked upon an eight-to-10-week course. It's taken a little longer, just because we have various members out, and the training's got automatic influence, New Power for Change, and Work and Life. And so the goal of the training really is to help our leaders develop strategies to enable us to better identify perceptual biases that really just block organizational growth. And in layman's terms, basically, it means we need to develop some empathy. We all have empathy, but we need to make sure we're continually doing an empathy check when we're talking to staff that we serve. And so we are public servants, and we're serving the staff. And so it's important that we recognize those and sort of employ those tactics in our everyday, you know, everyday practices on the job. And so with that, what we've been doing is really watching a series of videos around this. We've got a book that we're reading as well. And then we're taking quizzes, and then each leadership team meeting, which is weekly from 9:30 to 12, we're having a robust discussion with our facilitator around how that applies to actual work situations. And so I think we're getting a lot of value as a team for that, and I'm anxious to see where that takes us moving forward in terms of outputs for the organization. So, you know, for me, it's about building these leaders, and that includes me as well. And so we'll be, we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to have training goals for us throughout the year and beyond. And then lastly, we had a bunch of trainings for staff, as I mentioned, PERC training around interpreting our collective bargaining agreement for supervisors and managers. We had, CTS did a reader's advisory training for staff, and then bystander intervention in the workplace, and then intellectual freedom training for staff was held as well. So around the same topic, Marwan, we also did that for staff. And so we'll be, you know, keeping timely topics in a regular rotation for training. And then lastly, we talked about the website already. Really proud of the work that Jeanne's done again, and I can't wait. We'll be giving you all a chance to preview that site as well. So thank you. That's all I have. Any questions? Short report this month.
Any questions for Jason? Shannon, I made a note, you had a report in Jason's report. I noted again that you're contributing another member to the team somewhere else. Just wanted to thank you for the commitment to the personal and professional development that is going on really in the library. But every person's gain is somebody else's loss. So I just saw that again, and just wanted to call that out.
Yeah, and that was the aforementioned training and development department that we seek to really put a lot of meat into. And so really proud of the work Lucretia's done on that, and having a training specialist that we've identified within the organization is critical. And it's really part of our mission as a leadership team. We've said that we want to build leaders from within. And sometimes what that means is we might determine that there's a better fit in another department for a person. And so we have to continually recognize that growth not only occurs in a vertical way, but sometimes it's laterally. It's determining that the organization will be better served if that, those person's skill sets were applied to a different department. And so that's also part of training and development, is seeing where the puzzle pieces, for lack of a better phrasing, fit inside the organization. So Shannon has been gracious of, you know, being able to have a lot of those puzzle pieces, just because she probably has the most employees reporting to hers. And so she's got a really good eye for talent, and also has a really good eye for what all her people's skill sets are. So yeah, we're happy about that.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence, and we don't have any. Neither do we have old business or new business, which brings us right to the end of the agenda, which is housekeeping. And just noting that our next regular meeting of the board will be in, can't read it here, April 25th. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.